Good.
Good evening and welcome to the Select Board meeting of April eighth, two thousand and twenty five. First on our agenda is public comment. If anybody has anything they'd like to say, we do restrict it to two minutes. And please refrain from anything that is on tonight's agenda. We also have a limit of five speakers at each of our meetings. So anybody in the room? Uh, no hands up that I see Denise?
Nope.
Okay, moving along. Board members, updates and comments. Hector.
Just a quick shout out to my mom who turned ninety yesterday.
Congratulations from us.
Thank you.
Nothing from me.
Nothing from me.
And nothing from me.
Okay, well, I have something. On behalf of the board. Somebody else has a milestone. So I wanted to commemorate it.
Thank you very much. Thank you all.
Show our appreciation.
That was beautiful. I can't believe I'm turning thirty. The youngest town administrator will ever have.
That's right.
Thank you very much.
And moving along, Town Administrators' Report.
Thank you. I just have one item for you this evening, just to follow up on my legislative testimony. I testified again today at the MMA Board of Directors meeting in the Local Government Advisory Council. So today we met with the Lieutenant Governor and the Secretary of Administration and Finance. I testified on behalf of the critical need for increased state aid. I focused specifically on Chapter seventy, which is education funding. While my counterparts spoke about Chapter ninety, school transportation, bridges and culverts, and how there is a dire need across all aspects of municipal and school funding that we need more. Obviously, the state is concerned with the federal government and that they're going to have cuts and how are they going to continue to give us the aid that we need. But they do recognize that there is a problem and they recognize that the next few years are going to be very difficult for both municipal and state level. So I will continue my advocacy on behalf of Stowe and all other towns in the Commonwealth, but just wanted to let you know that I was out there again today, so.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you for your effort. Okay. I don't believe we have any appointments tonight.
We do not.
So, um. The public hearing is actually scheduled for seven thirty P M. So I think what I want to do is I'm going to shift. And what I want to do is turn our attention to Jana Gale, who is doing her Girl Scout Gold Award project request. So Jenna, the floor is yours.
Thank you for having me. So I am a Girl Scout. I've been a Girl Scout in Stowe since I was in first grade, so that's like a decade now. So it's been a while. I earned my gold or my silver award and my bronze award when I was with my troop and now I'm pursuing my gold award. So a gold award for Girl Scouts is very similar to an Eagle Scout Award for the Boy Scouts, except it has to be self-sustaining. So the sustainability part is for me, I want to establish a science-based curriculum in addition to what we have at Center School here in Stowe. I'm going to work with teachers and I've already contacted the principal and the vice-principal. We've had meetings. We've been in contact, keeping them in the loop, and we are all set with them. And I, going along with this curriculum, I want to implement and help create a outdoor learning environment that already exists behind the school. I want to fix it up, get it ready to go, so it can go hand in hand with the curriculum I want to establish and create with the teachers. I need your help and approval to make sure that there's nothing like on the conservation side, the town side, that could conflict with it. Yeah, but the fixing up the area is the first step and then creating the curriculum is the big finish and really makes it a gold award.
Wonderful. And up on the screen behind you is the wooden structure that is there. And there's also, um. Call them a couple unusable benches, pretty much, John.
Yeah, correct. So I definitely will want to be fixing up, refurbishing all of it, maybe adding some more stuff. It really depends based on the curriculum that I end up creating with the teachers. It all kind of builds from that, but we're definitely going to fix it up, make sure it's safe for everyone, get it up to code. Yeah, and really just making it the best it can be.
Great. I think that's wonderful and quite admirable. Anybody have any?
What is your timeframe?
So my timeframe for this is I will start working with teachers like as soon as possible, meeting with Mrs. Wesley, formerly Mrs. Mayotte, who I've already spoken to. That's going to be like my main source of entry and then go from there. Curriculum is beginning of next school year, like into fall a bit, because you can't really go outside once it gets super wintery, but full in effect by the spring. And then I want to do all the refurbishing, all the outdoor stuff over the summer, early fall.
Excellent, and go ahead.
Aside from our wholehearted support, what else can the Select Board do to help you?
At the moment, I don't think there's much. I'm definitely going to be fundraising for supplies and stuff. I already have a couple contacts based on people. Girl Scouts are recommended to me, people we know. But other than that, besides the approval, I don't know what else.
Just make sure you let us know through the Town Administrator what else we can do.
Yeah, a hundred percent.
Great.
Does Carden have a question?
Not yet.
Oh. Can you summarize the curriculum in one sentence?
So definitely something bio-ecosystem related. I've taken all AP Sciences. I took AP Bio last year, fell in love with it, like enjoyed it so much. And a lot of life sciences stuff is taught at like the second, third, fourth grade level, like where they actually go in the back. So I think that that's definitely what it's going to be about. Because if you're outside in the woods, it's like you're going to be able to see all these different things. So it's definitely going to be life sciences based.
One follow-up question. So you mentioned the conservation issues out there. Have you contacted the Conservation Commission?
No, I've been doing all of it.
Yes. Conservation has reviewed it, there's no concerns.
That's all.
She's right behind you.
And I would just like to add, so D P W went out and took down about ten small trees that were around the outdoor classroom just to make it safe for Jenna and the students. So they've done that in preparation as well.
Yeah, we want dead pines.
Could only imagine that.
The other comments or questions?
No, it sounds great.
I'll take a motion.
All right, Mr. Chair, I move to approve the Girl Scout Gold Award Project proposed by Girl Scout Jenna Gale.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any further discussion? I guess the window had to come. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Let the record show it's unanimous. Congratulations and good luck. Really, as Hector said, if there is anything else that we can do, please don't hesitate to come back before us.
I will. Thank you so much.
Okay, Jenna.
Thanks, Jennifer.
It was nice to meet you.
You too.
I guess now, since we were jumping around a bit, let's go to the Collings Foundation, the American Heritage Museums. Is there anybody on the line?
Hunter is on. So.
Does he hear you?
So we have in your packet the schedule of events, like we've done the last few years, to streamline the process. So Hunter reviewed that. They did, he did add a note that there would be encampments at the events this year. We just wanted to make sure that that was called out. But otherwise, the events are pretty much the same as they have been for the last few years. And I will turn it over to Hunter if he has comments.
Hi, evening, everyone.
Hi, Hunter.
Hello.
Yeah, basically the same as last year, no real changes.
Okay. Does anybody on the board have any questions or comments?
Yes, one question. Last year, there was a bit of an issue with some of the reenactors and a problem that happened in Hudson with one of the restaurants as reenactors showed up in full uniform. Has that been addressed for this year?
It has, yes, clearly. That is a rule and a rule that was broken and it is being reiterated.
Okay, great.
It's not going to happen again, definitely.
Awesome.
Great. I'll take a motion.
Mr. Chair, I move to approve the two thousand and twenty-five Schedule of Events for the American Heritage Museum as presented by the Collings Foundation, provided all public safety requirements are met.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Seeing and hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Let the record show it's unanimous. Moving along, let's do the event permit for Raising Connected Kids.
Thanks, everyone. Take care.
Thank you.
To Hunter, thank you.
Yeah, bye-bye.
Bye-bye. Is anybody here for?
No, so Jennifer is actually in New York for the launch of another social media campaign. So I told her I would pinch-hit for her this evening. So if I may, this is an event that is, Jennifer Henderson is spearheading with the Police Department and the Library. It will be at the Historic Town Hall on Tuesday, May sixth. It is for parents to talk about their kids and social media. They have a adolescent psychiatrist coming out to talk about the issues with social media, how smartphone use and social media impact students and children. And it's expected to be a rather engaging conversation. There is a registration required. So at this point, we don't know if it actually triggers the full event permit requirements, but we wanted to just bring it out here just in case and then that way they could start advertising it. She is asking if the town would waive the insurance requirement because it is a partnership with town departments. And I have no problem with that, so.
Questions? I'll take a.
I was just putting it on my calendar.
I'll take a motion on that.
Mr. Chair, I move to approve the event permit for the Raising Connected Kids Event on Tuesday, May sixth, two thousand and twenty-five, as presented by the Town Administrator.
Second.
May I ask you to just add in that the insurance requirement is waived, please?
And with the stipulation that the insurance requirement be waived.
Second again.
Moved and seconded, any further discussion? Seeing and hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Let the record show it's unanimous. Let's move now to the budget. I think we.
Do that in fifteen minutes?
I'm not sure.
I have to get prepared, so give me a moment. Mr. Chair, can I suggest that we do the warrant and the minutes? The warrant or the minutes?
Oh, yeah, I suppose we could do that.
It's just Kelly.
So that's why I was waiting for co-chairs of the Historical Society to draw up.
See, that's why you're the chair.
You know stuff.
He knows stuff.
Okay, let's do the annual town meeting warrant review.
So if I may?
You may.
So this is still a draft. Obviously, there's still things highlighted. The FinCom report is not in here. Dates have not been updated yet, but the warrant is fairly standard from the past. The budget represents the updated recommended budget that you all have the full budget book on that we will go through. The consent calendar, all the items are the same as last year. There were no new consent calendar items added. We did remove a few. I think I've talked about in the past, just because we always request it doesn't mean we fund it. There are several accounts that people have requested year after year, but they're not spending the money. So we've, I've pulled a few of those. Two in particular, just in case it comes up, is the public, I'm sorry, the private way funding under the D P W as well as the municipal parking lot line. Both of those accounts have two and a half years of funding sitting in them because either we don't have the staff or we don't have the resources to keep up with it. So obviously, we have a new D P W director who's much more engaged and focused on making the repairs to private ways, the potholes, and then redoing the municipal parking lots. But the money that we have in there is more than enough. But the consent calendar is relatively the same. Some amounts fluctuated slightly. The property valuations based on the number of inspections. We happen to be in a recertification year for our assessments, so that is a little higher than it normally is. The, and on the flip side, the Lake Boone Commission is lower than it has been because they have different expenses this year. So, but on the whole, those are almost a mirror image of what we've had in the past. Questions on the consent calendar before we go into the other items?
The consent calendar is the first, how many items?
So it starts at Article six and goes to thirty-five. I think it's Article six or Article five, five, thanks. So five to thirty-five is the consent calendar.
Got it.
It includes, you know, the regular run-of-the-mill includes our contribution to stabilization, capital stabilization, O P E B, legal services, and then all small, regular expenditures that we have. The capital requests has changed twice since I've printed this, so you will have a revised version when we look at the final. There were a significant amount of capital requests this year anchored by the Lake Boone Dam Project. So once the request came in, I met with every department who had submitted capital requests and we sort of negotiated what really needed to be done this year, what could be done next year, what could be pushed off to future years. I pushed some things off, I moved some things forward. For instance, the fire department was, had a one point one million dollar fire engine as a placeholder because three or four years down the road, we're going to start needing a fire engine. But we're hoping that manufacturing picks up a little bit so that we don't have to make that expenditure this year. So we pushed that off and then moved two of his smaller items up to this year. Redoing the apparatus floor, it's extremely slippery and they did not do it correctly when it was done. So this will actually add a base to the floor so that the employees are safe as well as refurbishing their forestry engine. So we started last year or two years ago putting some money aside to refurbish the vehicles. You know, usually somewhere between fifty and a hundred thousand to make some necessary repairs. That gets us a few more years. I think the one we did last year, they could, we could potentially get ten more years out of it. So making those small investments would increase the useful life. So do you want me to go through the capital items? I'm happy to go through them or? How do you want to handle that? Or have you all looked at them? Are there questions on them?
I've gone through all of it. And a lot of it seemed pretty straightforward and.
Yeah, I'll just touch upon, so since this was printed, the Hale School Assessment Report has been removed. The school and capital planning went through the regional agreement and determined that that does not meet the criteria for capital, so that has since come out. The rebuilding of the front walkway here at Town Building has increased in cost. The engineer gave an estimate today to expect an additional ten percent on top of that. We are applying for a grant for that, but under the accessibility grants, it looks more favorably if you have an appropriation because we're serious about doing it. So hopefully, we will not need those funds, but we did increase that cost. Obviously, the large-ticket item is the Lake Boone Dam. So we, from January to March, the estimate on the dam went up four hundred thousand dollars. So based on the current economy, what's happening at the federal level. So it started at four point three, we're up to four point seven million as an estimate. We have about eight hundred thousand dollars in cash currently from the million-dollar grant that we received. And we, in twenty-four, I think it was, made a three hundred thousand dollar appropriation under capital to have some seed money. So we have some funds available. So the request here, it's split between free cash and borrowing. So my recommendation is we use six hundred thousand dollars from free cash and then we have an appropriation for borrowing for three point four million. That does a couple of things. That would get us the full amount of money if the dam is four point seven million. But we do intend to apply, we are a candidate to apply for the million-dollar grant again, so we do intend to apply for that. We are looking at some alternatives, steel versus concrete and what pricing difference there may be with that. And any other opportunities that we have to either decrease funds or apply for additional funding, we will do. So the goal would be that we don't need three point four million in borrowing and something lower than that and then we can just resend the excess authorization. But until we finalize the permitting, which is still expected to take the majority of this calendar year, we just don't know. We don't know what it's going to, what it's going to be like next year when we actually go out to bid. But we do expect we will be ready for that before town meeting next year. There might be an opportunity at next year's town meeting, depending on where we fall, to make an additional free cash appropriation. So if we have another healthy free cash year, we can apply some free cash towards the project and again, decrease the borrowing authorization. That's all to be determined based on when the project is ready to go out to bid and where our free cash comes in. So that's obviously the largest ticket item, pretty much in the whole warrant other than the budget. Any questions on that? The other handful of articles that we have, the Community Preservation is putting forward an article for nine hundred and thirty thousand, four hundred and twenty-seven dollars for the library project. I did print out for you all the report that we submitted to C P C to show the actual breakdown. So these were costs incurred when the nineteen seventies edition came down and deficiencies were discovered with the historical building. We've talked about this a bit. The footings were missing from several areas under the building. It's causing the building to start to sink. We had a four-inch difference from one side of the library to the other. So we had to replace footings, we had to replace the cement slab. When we opened up walls, there were columns that were on the plans that did not exist, so we had to replace those. All of those items required shoring to make sure the historical building remained standing. Obviously, and then additional labor costs because we had to mobilize the crew longer to do this work. So the majority of that has already all been paid out. It has depleted our contingency. So we do still have the remainder of the project. So this technically will replenish the contingency, but it will be applied towards the historic portion so that we meet C P C criteria. The other couple of small articles, subscription services, we've talked about this a few times. There are costs that we've incurred that we paid for initially with CARES Act and then ARPA funds. Well, all of what, what we call magic money is gone. So those services amount to about twenty-eight thousand dollars to keep up the Zoom license. Now we use an A I service, the P R services, the facility work order system. So that would continue those services for us. The Town Events Fund, so we historically would contribute to Spring Fest. Obviously, we've not had Spring Fest in a few years. This article would put a small contribution and then just change the name of the account to Town Events. So if we want to use the funding for Stowcase, we have it for that. If we do have Spring Fest, we have it for that. It just gives us more flexibility. The next one is Veterans Exemption. So this is a new exemption this year that authorizes just an annual increase for the veterans based on the Consumer Price Index. Obviously, Town Meeting has to approve any new exemptions. It's fairly standard. Acceptance of Lake Boone Dam easement. So this is, there's only one property owner that owns a portion of the bank, the dam bank. And so this is in preparation for that process. Any funds that need to be paid out, if they need to be paid out, would be covered from the existing cash that we already have. So either through the grant funding. So there will be no appropriation for this. This is just to authorize you all to execute an easement when we get to that point. The last few articles, one of them is the amendment to the general bylaw for posting of town meeting. The town clerk had submitted this. Currently, the requirement is the liquor store, the post office, a number of places around town, the insurance company, no one goes in there looking for a town meeting warrant any longer. So this just calls out that it's the official town website. Obviously, she will continue to have them here, she will continue to have them in the library. And I believe she said she'll continue to post one at the post office, but it just removes the requirement that we're hanging our town meeting warrant in liquor stores and insurance companies. The next article is, just to clarify the language in our bylaw governing town meeting time. So town meeting time is the parliamentary law in which we follow for the rules of town meeting. It references a publisher that we do not get the material from anymore. So it just points to the Mass Moderators Association, minor clerical cleanup. And then lastly, the Green Advisory Committee is submitting a bylaw to eliminate the use of single-use plastic bags. They have been working with the Board of Health. The Board of Health does support this article. They have met or are meeting with the E D I C to talk about business outreach. It only affects a handful of businesses and at this point, it's only the single-use bags. Obviously, the larger, the largest impact would be Shaw's. And quite frankly, we are one of the only Shaw's that still use plastic bags. Everyone else has already gone to the paper bags. So we expect this to be a minimal impact and there is a six-month-ish grace period. The bylaw would go into effect on January first if it passes. That's it. Any questions?
Great. Wonderful.
Thank you.
You're welcome. So you will have a final version to vote on at your next meeting. It will go to print the next morning and I will be sure to highlight any changes. I just articulated a few, I really don't expect more. Town Council will have it back to me next Wednesday, I believe. The Finance Committee's public hearing is next Wednesday, so we're moving forward. You're welcome.
Okay, let's, that's just a review at this point, no need for a motion or anything. So let's go to meeting minutes, shall we? I'll take a motion.
All right, Mr. Chair, I move to accept the meeting minutes of the March twenty-fifth, two thousand and twenty-five meeting.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Comments?
Brilliant.
Fantastic.
Like with my absence.
Great job.
Okay. Seeing and hearing, no further comments or questions, all those in favor? I let the record show it's unanimous. Okay. Do have a couple of minutes, five minutes.
So you have two, that's, that's all.
That's wrong.
Ah, I have two minutes, okay. Does anybody have any comments at this point on correspondence that we received?
No.
I would like to see something on the agenda to discuss the item raised by.
Just blank on the minutes.
Bataro and Miller.
Yes, about town meeting and seeing if there's anything we can do to support some type of childcare.
Okay.
I don't think we can do it in time for this town meeting, but at least.
No, so if that is something that you want to entertain, then we really need to talk about it, well.
No, we can't do it for this.
But I don't even have money for next fiscal year because the budget's now done. So we can certainly have that conversation, but they're looking for us to help fund it. I don't have a budget line item for funding that. So we can certainly talk about it and see what alternatives there are, but. But I don't have the money.
Start the conversation, see where it goes.
Okay, yeah, we can try to get you down to on our agenda.
Relatively quickly. Relatively quickly.
Okay. All right.
Jack Andrew, in.
Okay, uh, we will move to the public hearing. Notice is hereby given under chapter one thirty eight of the general laws that Edward Painter, DBA Shelburne Farm, Edward Painter, manager-owner for premises located at one oh six West Acton Road, Stowe, has applied for a section twelve license to sell wine and malts for on-premises consumption, and for a section fifteen license to sell wine and malts for off-premises consumption. A block, public hearing will be held on the license applications on Tuesday, April eighth, twenty twenty five, at seven thirty PM in the Stow Town Building, three eighty Great Road, with attendance in person or via Zoom. Published in the Stow Independent on Wednesday, March twenty sixth, twenty twenty five. May I have a motion to open?
Uh, um, Mr. Chair, I move that the public hearing for the liquor license applications for Shelburne Farm at one oh six West Acton Road in Stowe be opened.
Second.
This requires a rule call. Mr. Costanzos.
Aye.
Ms. Hegman-Clark.
Aye.
Ms. Frecha.
Aye.
Ms. Birch-McMichael.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye, let the record show it's unanimous. Okay. Um, we received all of the documentation, um, that I saw. Um, I do have the two licensing authority certifications here for us. Does anybody have any questions?
What, off-premises?
Um, basically, it's for bottled.
A package store.
Package store, but not for hard liquor. Correct, it's only for, uh, wine and malts.
Okay.
Um, and in the pack that we received, they explained, um, that, um, it would just be seasonal as well as, um, the other license, they're both set up to be seasonal.
But I do want to add the caveat, it doesn't have to be, because this is an annual license.
Right.
So if they choose to sell, um, malts and wines and beers outside of the season, that it, that would be allowed under the permit, the license.
Okay. I don't have an issue. And, um. Any other questions, comments?
I had the upper. Candidly, this is down the street from my house, but, um, they, I had an opportunity to go last year when we had the, um, had given them the license and they've done a fantastic job with, um, with the layout and everything, and, and I'm really excited to kind of make this more permanent for them.
Yeah, agreed.
I agree.
And, uh, I do want to thank you for the added extra documentation, by the way.
Give you our whole life story.
Yeah. But, uh, I do want to thank you very much for that. Any other questions?
No.
Okay, I'll take a motion to, uh.
I would, I would ask, maybe you want to have, see if they would like to say anything during the public hearing?
Would you like to say anything?
I'll just say two things, uh, um, uh, one is, we're really excited. But most importantly, I want to thank all of you and, and the town. Uh, everyone from the beginning of this process with the temporary permits for the two years to getting us through this week, you know, at the beginning, didn't know what we were doing. And everyone has been so incredibly helpful, and, uh, this is going to be a, a really big help to sort of building a stronger foundation to keep the farm going forward, so. I just want to say thank you, that's, that's really it, I really appreciate how supportive the town is. That's everyone, neighbors, the government, everybody.
Whoa, I mean.
Local government.
Yeah, local government.
Local.
Local government, yes. Okay, um. Yep.
Uh, Kathy Sfera, seventy-four, West Acton Road, here with Jim Salvi, my husband, and, um, we are direct abutters to Shelburne Farm, and, um, I just came tonight to say a few words on their behalf and support their application. So.
Thank you. And that's duly noted.
It shows that things are going well if a butter says.
I know, seriously.
Sorry, sorry to interrupt you.
Uh, no problem at all. Uh, Kelly Lawler, one seventy Hudson Road, and I was able to make it last year with my family, and it was just such a cool place to go for all ages, and so my kids were welcome there, um, and then I was welcome there, and then the malts were delicious, so. They had a really nice, um, this thing going on in the barn with all the different offerings that they have for drink choices, I liked it.
That's great. My only question is, are you going to be putting your cider out to other venues, uh, to try to get more folks to use it?
We, we'd love to, I think, um, one day at a time, and. But, yeah, I mean, the, we'll, we'll keep, we're open to everything, and anytime we get positive response, we'll, um, for, so, we'll, uh, see what happens.
That question is from a positive experience, that's why he's asking. More exposure. Okay.
I'd just like to say also, as a non-abutting neighbor through the woods, that I, I strongly support your efforts to, um, because I love farming in Stowe, and I, and, uh, I love all the animal barns and things that you have there.
You know a thing or two about them.
So, uh, so I think it's great that you're able to find ways to diversify.
Thank, thank you.
Uh, so the application actually had, um, for hours of operation, it was not definitive. So the board will need to determine what you're recommending for the license for hours of operation, because the ABCC will need to know that. I think you said five or six is sort of the ending time. Do you have thoughts, do you have, so you should have that conversation about what their hours should be, because that will have to go on the license.
I guess I'll say the, for the store, uh, six o'clock is when we close, we never open later than six, so that, for that off-premises, there wouldn't be a need to go later. For the, um, the onsite, normally, it would be like we've done until six. But I think last year we extended it i- in the event that we had like a corporate outing or something and they wanted to add cider, so. We should probably make that, I don't know, maybe nine would cover, we've never had anything in the dark at the farm, but, um, you know, something later than six would probably make sense.
Uh, no, I think that makes total sense, um, be- because you, you want it.
I think she has a suggestion.
No, uh, but also, um, uh, so they have a nine AM, it's time to start serving alcohol. I, I don't believe we would support a nine AM.
We did twelve.
Yeah, we did twelve.
Yeah, the on-premise is nine AM, um, until five or six PM, so we should set that as well.
Twelve, yeah, let's, I think twelve.
Twelve PM to nine PM is what you're asking.
Nine.
Wait, that's for the in-store purchasing?
No, the on-premise licenses.
On-premise, to consume, to consume it.
Got it, sorry. Sorry, I'm having such a difficulty with this.
Coffee in this line, cider in that line.
The store, I just want to see, did you put the same hours down for the store?
Yeah, it said five or six, I believe.
But I think it also said nine AM then, right?
The store opens at nine for general things, um, I mean, we don't, but whatever makes sense is fine for us. If you, we should make it later for the cider, that's okay, but it is open at nine, so.
Or I don't know, we have regulations. I'm not usually in line when they open.
When the liquor store opens.
I'm, I'm going to pull that up.
Okay.
Liquor store opens at nine.
Nine. Really?
Except for Sundays, I think they open.
Is it like the one at BJ's you can't open, shop and stuff, I don't know.
I think.
Information we should probably.
Haven't a lot of those state regulations gone away?
Then I was raised in Rhode Island, like, I know. Very specific.
So we have the, um, sale of alcohol beverages regulations that the board adopted in twenty fourteen. Have to find those. But that's what the licenses all say for package stores, it references that.
We have someone in the audience that might have been on the board at that time.
He's had a few of those ciders, come on, give the guy a break. I think we may have discouraged open containers before noon. Yeah, maybe, but I don't know about.
But selling from a store, why, should there be any difference between a farm store and the two liquor stores we have?
I guess the convenience store.
I found them.
Okay, great.
So ten AM on Sundays, ten AM to one AM is what you, um, and then holidays, eight AM to, so starting at eight AM. Um, Memorial Day and Christmas Day is twelve noon, so I think if you're fine with those, we can just reference, and I can make sure you have the, um, hours that the board adopted. Um, obviously, the on-premise would be different.
Procedurally, we have the return tickets, do we need, do you need these for the mailing?
I will keep them, um, in the file.
For the motion, I can just say, as amended at this meeting, right? Like, the application and then as amended, or do you want me to put the actual? I would say twelve to nine in the motion.
Okay.
That's for the onsite?
The onsite, yeah.
For the?
This, the section twelve. Okay.
Yeah.
The section fifteen, you don't need to, because it will just follow the policy we already have in place.
Okay.
Is that a close to hearing first?
Close to hearing first.
Yeah, we have to do that. Um, any other comments before I, anybody online? Seeing and hearing none, I'll take a motion to close the hearing.
Okay, uh, Mr. Chair, I move that the public hearing for the liquor license applications for Shelburne Farm at one oh six West Acton Road in Stowe be closed.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded to close the hearing, uh, roll call, vote, Mr. Costanzos.
Aye.
Ms. Hegman-Clark.
Aye.
Ms. Frecha.
Aye.
Ms. Birch-McMichael.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye, let the record show it's unanimous. I will take a motion, um.
All right, Mr. Chair, I move to approve the section twelve seasonal on-premises all alcohol liquor license application for Shelburne Farm at one oh six West Acton Road in Stowe, as described in the application, received February twentieth, twenty twenty five, and amended at this meeting from twelve PM to nine PM, and subject to final approval by the Massachusetts Alcoholic Beverages Control Commission. And further, I move to sign the licensing authority certification for submission to the Massachusetts Alcoholic Beverages Control Commission. And I move to approve the section fifteen off prom, uh, off-premises wine and malt beverage liquor license application for Shelburne Farm at one oh six West Acton Road in Stowe, as described in the application, received February twentieth, twenty twenty five, and subject to final approval by the Massachusetts Alcoholic Beverages Control Commission. And further, I move to sign the licensing authority certification for submission to the Massachusetts Alcoholic Beverages Control Commission.
Second.
Give that gal some oxygen. Um, okay, it has been moved and seconded, any further comments or questions? Seeing and hearing none, this will be a roll call vote.
You're out of the public hearing, it doesn't need to be, it's up to you.
Yep, Mr. Costanzos.
Aye.
Ms. Hegman-Clark.
Aye.
Ms. Frecha.
Aye.
Ms. Birch-McMichael.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye, let the record show it's unanimous.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Please come and join us.
Yes.
Oh, yes, oh, yeah. We shall.
Is tonight too soon?
Not open yet, Hector.
Okay, thank you all.
I.
Thank you. Okay, let's move to the Historical Society to discuss the two hundred and fiftieth anniversary of the Battle of Lexington and Concord. It is about to send off events scheduled for April nineteenth, twenty twenty five, and we do have the proclamation.
May I add a brief public service announcement?
Sure.
So apparently, we've lost our Zoom camera, but the audio is working. So we are still in a legal meeting, but the camera disconnected, so just so you're aware.
Okay.
You speak Kenobi?
Well, you're still on, you're still on TV. Yeah, just like, I can see you right there.
Is that your reelection speech?
Everyone knows where, so.
So. Your words, your words, please identify yourselves. I'd like to hear from you.
Who, me?
Both, actually, either one.
I'll speak, I'm, I'm Bruce Fletcher, I'm co-president with Dorcas Septon of the, uh, newly formed Executive Board of the Stow Historical Society. We also have Kelly Lawler, one of our treasures, Kathy Sfera is our clerk, um, we have a few others, um, uh, that aren't here tonight, um, and, um, I, I'd look, like to say one thing about, um, the word send-off.
Yeah.
Uh, we had intended to, to do a send-off for the Minutemen, but they're so busy, um, appropriately so, uh, on the nineteenth and on the evening of the eighteenth, that we decided to do this, um, later in the day, on the nineteenth, after the Minutemen have already gone to Concord, uh, but to sell.
They might show up, one or two.
Yeah, they may. Hopefully, they'll show up, uh, when they come back, if they, uh, if they can. Um, they have a full day over in Concord, as you might imagine that day. So we wanted to recognize the day, um, being such a significant day in history, and a significant day in Stowe's history, where eighty-one of our, um, brave citizens, out of nine, a population of about nine hundred, picked up their arms and marched over to Concord to engage with the enemy. Um, so we appreciate the fact that, uh, um, we, we hope you'll endorse the proclamation. And, uh, we'd love to have you, uh, attend on the nineteenth at three o'clock in the afternoon. Open ho- open house at the town hall with, um, presentations and, um, hopefully, a reading of the proclamation and, uh, other dignitaries.
And cake.
And cake and, hopefully, ice cream too, I don't know. Refreshments.
And JT, you won't be here, right?
No, I will actually be, um.
You're Lexington.
Yes, um, all day with those events, I've been invited to that, so unfortunately, I won't be able to be here. However, the proclamation has been signed.
Good.
Um, by all of our select board here, um, and I will forego the reading since you're going to be doing it on the day of.
Oh, you can read it, you can read it.
Who's going to give that honor, okay, well.
We can read it again.
Okay, select board, Town of Stowe, three eighty Great Road, Stowe, Mass.
Should I make a motion first?
Sure.
Great. Mr. Chair.
I apologize, I didn't even see it on my list.
Uh, Mr. Chair, I move to approve and sign the proclamation commemorating the two hundred and fiftieth anniversary of the Battle of Lexington and Concord, as presented by the Stow Historical Society.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, any further discussion? I'll now read it. Select Board, Town of Stowe, three eighty Great Road, Stowe, Mass, oh one seven seven five. Proclamation in commemoration of the two hundred and fiftieth anniversary of the Revolutionary War, April nineteenth, twenty twenty five. Whereas Saturday, April nineteenth, twenty twenty five marks the two hundred and fiftieth anniversary of the start of the Revolutionary War, and commemorates the battles of Lexington and Concord, which took place on April nineteenth, seventeen seventy-five. And whereas the Town of Stowe, through its select board, would like to recognize the eighty-one Stowe citizens, who, having been alerted by Samuel Prescott on that fateful day, answered the alarm and marched to Concord to engage in battle with the British regulars after shot heard round the world, the volley of battles in Lexington and Concord, marking the start of the Revolutionary War. And whereas the Town of Stowe seeks to honor those valiant and patriotic individuals of the Stowe Minutemen and militia that marched to Concord on April, since nineteenth, seventeen seventy-five, and whom, in official records of the battle, pursued the British so as to deserve special mention. And whereas our modern-day Minutemen carry on this tradition in their annual march to Concord, reminding us of the brave acts of our predecessors and the importance of this day in America's. reminding us of the brave acts of our predecessors and the importance of this day in America's history. Now, therefore, the Select Board of the Town of Stowe honors and commemorates this historic day and joins with our surrounding communities and the Stowe Historical Society in celebrating the two hundred and fiftieth anniversary of the start of the American Revolutionary War. Signed this day, the eighth of April twenty twenty five, by members of the Select Board of Stowe, Massachusetts.
Thank you.
We have to vote.
We have to vote.
Vote.
We have to vote.
Yep.
You just did such a performance.
Discussion first.
Any further discussion?
No.
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Let the record show it is unanimous.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Uh, we also have some events, other events. I think Kelly was going to speak to that.
Oh.
Next motion.
No.
No, oh, I just.
Briefly.
Yeah, just, we just, um, wanted to say that we have a really strong board. We want the public to come out to our events. Um, we are meeting monthly in the Town Hall, the Historic Town Hall, right across the road. Um, and we will be inviting the public to those meetings as well, too. Um, we are just kind of forming our executive board. Um, and then we want to have many more events and programming out for the public. We're considering, um, we have a meeting tomorrow night, and we are working with the black res, the black citizens of Lexington, Massachusetts, and they've recently put together a screening, and so we are inviting, um, Sean Osborne, a public historian, um, and another woman from the National Historic Parks Registry that, um, are going to be, um, showing us, uh, the different black residents of Lexington during this time period. So, um, obviously, as a historical society, we want to continue to focus on all the different time periods, um, but right now, um, this is pretty celebratory and timely.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay.
I'm glad you guys are so active.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Super.
That's.
Do you like the bunting?
Yes.
Yes.
It looks great. Tea stain.
I know, we, we could buy new bunting. I asked if it was historic, I was like, was that historic?
It came that way.
It's new.
It is?
It was on, it was on purpose, yeah.
It's called tea stained.
The white was too light.
Yeah.
I like that. I like that.
It looks brand new, it kind of defeats the purpose.
It is brand new, though.
It's funny that.
It's called tea stained.
Yeah.
Okay, moving right along. Now, I think we are into our budget discussion. Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
Yes, I'm looking forward to it.
You're welcome to stay for the budget discussions.
Yeah.
Hi.
I am getting an extra two fifty, though, aren't I?
You are.
I will have to cross that line.
Yep.
Good night.
Good night.
Okay.
Page by page.
I'm going to ask that we refrain from discussing anything with the Council on Aging at this point in time in the budget. And hold that to last, and at that point, I will recuse myself. Because, um, my beautiful bride, um, sits as the Director of the COA, so. Who delivered an amazing chocolate cake to my mom. But she wanted to share with the whole building, I'm like, maybe that's.
Okay. Are we ready, Madam Administration?
So I'm going to focus on the spreadsheet that's in your packet. Um, obviously, the budget book is, it's online under this meeting, so people can read the requests um, and follow along more thoroughly, more thoroughly there. I'm going to go over, um, sort of our revenue, uh, projections, and then I will go through the expenditures. Uh, for our revenue, uh, with the tax levy, we're not expecting anything crazy. Um, the prop two and a half levy, um, that is eight hundred and thirty thousand that we can increase taxes. Um, and then we are expecting conservatively two hundred thousand for new growth. So new growth is, um, increased to building permits, housing, new housing. Um, I do expect that to be conservative, because the goal would be that both the Stowe Acres, um, property would be underway, as well as, um, the Masters Academy, which would bring in, um, some revenue. But we want to be conservative, because in case anything causes a delay with those projects. Uh, so that would bring the tax base to thirty-four million two sixty-nine ninety-seven. So that's what we are expecting if everyone paid their taxes, if the new growth was at two hundred thousand. That's what we'd be expecting to collect, uh, across the board. Um, the debt exclusions. So we have, um, we have debt exclusions that are the municipal side, and then we have the debt exclusions that are the town si, uh, the school side. Uh, the increase for the debt exclusion on the town side is related to the, um, fire engine that we, um, no, I'm sorry, that is wrong. That was inside the levy. Um, the new, uh, the library, the two, the six point eight seven million for the library project. The only increase that's absorbed in here is the first year of interest. Uh, we are just temporarily borrowing that um, until the fall, when we have a better idea if we need to borrow that full amount, uh, wait and see what happens with the economy. Um, so there was one interest payment, and then the remaining payments will fall in fiscal twenty-seven and beyond. The debt exclusion for the school Minutemen has stayed fairly level. Um, obviously, the majority of that increase is the first approximate hundred million of the Neshoba Regional High School project. So that will affect taxes, um, as we talked about previously. Um, I expect that to increase, um, starting in July to spread out that tax burden over twelve months instead of only six months. Uh, but folks will see, um, a rather large increase that is attributable to the school project. So when we add the debt exclusions, we will be looking at just under forty million for collection on taxes in total, um, thirty-nine million two seventy-four sixty-six. Um, other items, state aid, um, state aid is, uh, where am I? Relatively flat, um, for the unrestricted general government aid. The state, the governor's House One budget includes a two point two percent increase. Um, they had committed to, uh, trending along with the increase in revenue for a state. Um, to be honest with you, two point two million is, is low. I mean, you can see it's like ten thousand dollars. It really does nothing to help small towns. Uh, we appreciate it, but it really is not enough to help us. The other items, the veterans, blind, uh, surviving spouses, those are reimbursements for exemptions. Um, so we're paying money out, we're getting money back. Excuse me. Um, and then the public library funds is based on the, uh, library budget. So we technically use that to offset their budget, um, but it shows as a state aid contribution. Our local receipts, so we are, uh, we do fairly well with our local receipts. Uh, this is really the only other way that we generate revenue. Motor vehicle excise tax, we are, um, expecting an increase, although it could be more now with tariffs and other costs that will be going onto vehicles. But we're expecting about one point two five million to come in from excise tax. The rest of them, we kept fairly, um, similar to where they are. Um, it doesn't hurt to be conservative, because anything extra would go to free cash if the receipts, if we have a better year. Uh, again, I am looking at the licensing and permit line. We kept that level at a hundred and eighty thousand. But I would expect that to be significantly higher if the Masters Academy and the residents of Stowe Acres get underway, we would have that permit revenue. But with it being an unknown, we don't want to count on that at this point. All other local receipts were level funded, um, which, which are, um, you know, department revenue, licensing, liquor license costs, um, interest on earnings. We kept that level. It's kind of a wild card. Um, it could go down dramatically if interest rates change. Um, but we, that's all sort of a wait and see. The goal would be that if something like interest takes a hit, we make up for it in one of the other ca, one of the other categories that we've been conservative on. The local receipts is a whole number at the end of the day. It doesn't matter if one category does better than the other, as long as we make one point nine million in total local receipts, then we would have met our benchmarking. Uh, some other items that are really transfers, um, the peg access and cable-related money, so that's money that comes in through the cable providers, um, that you all pay in your bill, they send us a check. Uh, that's what funds Stowe TV and those related expenses, so we just move it from one account to another. Uh, the Community Preservation Committee, the same thing. Um, that's money that comes out of the Community Preservation Account and goes under their administrative costs. That covers their, um, clerical staff, and then any other administrative invoices that they choose to pay. The Wetland Protection Fund and the Conservation Land Maintenance are both, uh, conservation articles. Um, they come from just different accounts, and we're just shifting money around. Um, so that is not money coming in or going out, we're just moving it between accounts. Uh, we are not, I'm not recommending to use free cash on any articles this year with the exception of capital. Last year, we used some for some random items. Uh, more specifically, we used it on that, um, sort of insurance buyout that we had to pay for Minuteman Neshoba. Um, we are expecting some of that back. Um, they overestimated the rollout claims, and so we are waiting. Um, Erin had a meeting last week or two weeks ago, and we are expecting a portion of that to come back. That would just roll into free cash next year.
That's good news.
Yes. Um, the free cash category, um, I touched upon it briefly in the warrant. Uh, we will make our annual two hundred and thirty-five thousand dollar appropriation to OPEM. Two hundred thousand into the stabilization account, a hundred thousand into the capital stabilization, and then all the capital items combined. And actually, I have to change that, because we changed those other two. Um, it's one million nine fifty-five now. One million nine fifty-five zero six zero is the new capital number, um, that will be, for free cash, that will be going in the warrant. So that is pretty much a summary, summary of our revenue. Um, with all of that consolidated, we would expect our total revenue to be forty-four million five hundred twenty-one thousand and change. Um, so that is what we expect our revenue total to be. Now we get into the expenditure side. I, I will not go too in-depth unless you want me to, or unless you have questions. The, yes, the moderator's salary, I doubled it at a whopping two hundred and fifty dollars more. Um, I lied, it does, he did not request that, I gave it to him. We actually have an active moderator, an active deputy moderator that attends the Moderator Association, they buy materials, so, um, we did increase that. In the Administration Department, um, a couple of changes. So there's a decrease in the wages line for the Select Board Office. Um, last year, Phoebe was working sixteen hours a week. She had asked to decrease her hours down to ten hours a week. Um, so that reflects, um, her going from sixteen to ten hours. The office expense, um, we often have extra money, so that's just cutting it down five hundred dollars from eight thousand to seventy-five hundred, um, as we don't necessarily need the expense money that's in that budget. My salary, that is the last year of my contract, so we will have to negotiate that towards the end of calendar twenty-five. So that was in there from two years ago. Um, Erin is, uh, due a cost of living increase. This year, the step increases are applicable to grades one to five. Grades six, seven, and eight will get a step increase next year. So you'll see some, most of the department headline items, it's only a three percent increase, which is the cost of living. And most of the wages line will be some fluctuation higher, because it is a step increase plus a cost of living as we go through. Um, the procurement wages, uh, we have had that position vacant, uh, since August. Uh, we've tried a few times, really haven't had anyone qualified that meets the requirements. A lot of people want to learn procurement, it's really not that type of environment, so. I did lower the salary back down to lower on the pay scale, um, and we will put it out again and see if there's any luck, um, hiring someone, but, um, this will be our busy season, so the goal would be to get somebody on board for the summer, but I did lower that salary a little bit, just to help us keep the budget in check. We are increasing the, or I am recommending increasing the expense line. Uh, we are paying for more and more advertisements for job postings. Um, the cost of all of that has gone up. Um, we have signed up for some online, um, posting services that have a fee uh, when we are primarily posting jobs. Uh, we try and reach all the avenues that we can, um, and there's just a slight cost to some of those things. So the administrative budget overall is only up point zero seven percent. Finance Committee is level funded from last year. Town accountant, it's just her cost of living increase, everything else is level funded. Uh, the assessors' wages, so she is not taking a pay cut, she's not getting a small increase. Her fiscal twenty-five salary was over-calculated. Uh, we actually pay salaries based on the number of days in the fiscal year, and every year, people get it wrong. So there happens to be two hundred and sixty-one days, I think, which breaks down to one thousand nine hundred and fifty-eight hours, and so it was just off. So she is getting her full three percent increase, it's just fixing the over calculation from the prior year. Otherwise, her expenses and her wages line are fairly minimal. Uh, treasure collector, same thing. The basic wage increases for the treasure collector and the staff. Um, his expenses are decreased, because he was able to renegotiate some of his contracts that he has, uh, the postage account, and some for banking services, so he was able to save some money on that. Um, IT, so the wages has the regular cost of living, you'll see a large increase on the expense side. Uh, we have been working now for a few years to, um, fully move over to the cloud, so that we no longer need physical servers. We started this process, the goal was to have it rolled out during ARPA, never got, never got to it. The funding was not obligated, so we missed out on the opportunity to pay, use ARPA funds for that project. So this would actually take care of the implementation of cloud services, um, for everything except for the two public safety departments um, because of their requirements with their, um, reporting server. Um, unless that's in the cloud, it doesn't make sense to move them into the cloud, so this would be all other town departments. So hopefully, we'll get that squared away. And then we will not need to replace physical servers, we will get rid of the ones we have and streamline it. Town clerk's salary, again, fairly straightforward, the salary and other wages. Um, the election wages obviously is decreased. We only have one election in fiscal twenty-six, so we do not need all the additional funding. That's also the reason for the expense line to be cut, um, is the cost of elections. Conservation, uh, straightforward, salary increases, uh, nothing else crazy with that. Same thing with the planning board, um, it's just the regular wage increases for the director and the staff. Municipal buildings, um, so the property wages, um, so there's two reasons that there's an increase in property wages. We used to split the Assistant Facilities Director slash Local Inspector into two budgets. Part of his salary would come under the Building Department, part of his salary would come under the Facilities Department. It just got too difficult to figure out which percentage, so we just moved all of his funding under the Facilities Department. So there'll be a decrease on the Building Department, so that accounts for the increase in that wage line. The rest of it are just the, um, standard, um, steps and cost of living. The municipal building expense, so the expense line here, um, obviously, the cost of maintaining our buildings is out of control. Um, at your next meeting, you will have some year-end transfers as we start to wind down fiscal twenty-five. And right now, I'm estimating about a thirty thousand dollar shortfall on the, uh, electric line. It is costing us a tremendous amount of money to both heat and use electricity in all of our buildings. So, not sure that's going to come down, but this is to increase, um, to an average of the last two years of what was actually spent, trying to get us more in line with the actual cost of maintaining the infrastructure.
Yeah, this looks like it's a forty-four point two percent variation. And that's directly from the companies? The charges?
Yeah, yep. So Eversource and HLP.
Time to go sober.
Uh, so the total general government section has an increase of three point eight five percent. A lot of that was the, uh, building property expense and the IT increase. A lot of that was the, uh, building property expense and the I T increase. Otherwise the wages all came in, if you average them out, I think it's less than three percent, um, on the wages side. Uh, police department, so police and fire, um, the salary line and the wages line is fairly standard, again, nothing crazy. Uh, the police chief is under contract, um, he's in year two of his contract. Uh, obviously the fire chief, we just finalized his contract. Um, the wages line are fairly standard on both, it's the expense line. So on both departments, the expense line is based on the rising cost of maintaining the vehicles. It is, along with maintaining our buildings, maintaining our vehicles is very costly. Um, there are a lot of concerns about what's going to happen, um, obviously with what, with what is going on in the world. Um, we are expecting parts to increase in price, uh, we are expecting, um, maintenance to increase. Uh, we have been extremely fortunate that Jerry and our D P W as our mechanic has done a lot of work on police and fire vehicles. There's obviously things that he cannot, um, handle, he cannot handle the large trucks. Um, so any of the large fire engines have to be serviced elsewhere. Um, we've already made, I think, thirty thousand in reserve fund transfers to the fire department for vehicle maintenance. Um, and so these are to increase those two line items to again, hopefully, um, address these issues so that we're not dealing with them after the fact, but we can be proactive dealing with the expenses. Uh, so the building inspector, as I just mentioned, the clerical line has a decrease because we moved those funds into the facilities line. Otherwise that's a fairly straightforward department. Uh, D P W, so the reason the D P W percentages appear high is because this is the first year that we fully consolidated the cemetery into the D P W. So the cemetery department budget is zeroed out, all of those, um, costs are included in the department of public works now. Um, a couple of things to note, the, we obviously have a new D P W director, his salary is higher than the previous director, so that accounts for the salary line. The D P W wages, we actually wrapped up negotiations with the union yesterday. So, um, at one of your next meetings, you will be ratifying that contract. So that includes, um, any increases that we negotiated. Um, and we, we negotiated some increases to some stipends. Um, and I think some clothing allowance we negotiated, so, so that is all included in this budget. Uh, the expense is the same thing, uh, the cost of maintaining the buildings, uh, the cost of materials that they're using over there. Um, and just the cost of doing public works buil- business. Uh, I am recommending a slight increase in snow and ice. Um, I think we talked about this when I gave my financial state of the town. Went back and forth on this, um, this year we've overspent snow and ice by a hundred and fifteen thousand dollars. So I need to find that now and that's what I've been working on today, um, in the end of the fiscal year. So we are fortunate, in a good way, I guess, um, that we've had a couple of positions vacant, uh, for a portion of the year. So there is salary money that's freed up that we can move over. But obviously as that number grows, it gets harder and harder to find those funds by the end of the fiscal year. So it is a modest increase at twenty-five thousand dollars, but at this point every bit helps. And it's twenty-five thousand dollars less than I will have to find if we, we find ourselves in a situation, um, that we either have a heavy snow season or a heavy ice season. I would expect in the near future, we will have to increase that again, um, as material, material costs skyrocketed this past year. Um, so as that continues, um, we will have to look at that. Uh, there's also another item that I just want to call out just because it's so fresh in my mind from today. Um, there is legislation that has, um, been adopted at the state level. It's the advanced clean truck, clean truck initiative, I don't know. Um, I think it's, yeah, they reference it as act. Um, so the state of Massachusetts mirrors the state of California and their sustainability efforts. And one of those is when it comes to large vehicles. Um, the requirement for that is for every manufacturer that sells a large vehicle, they have to sell a percentage of fully E V or non-fossil fuel vehicles. So with the large manufacturers like Peterbilt and the trucks that we use, they are not even in the E V business. So they have to come up with an all-new business model in order to comply with California requirements, Massachusetts, and I think there are seven other states that are following these guidelines. The legislature has heard our complaining, um, and has decided to delay the municipal rollout of this for two years while we continue to see if there's a better alternative. As you all know, it's harder for us to get vehicles now, we're waiting. If we now have to wait for manufacturers to meet the requirements, we may never get trucks. Um, and manufacturers that make fire engines, uh, they just don't make these types of vehicles because you will never have an E V fire truck or dump truck, there's just not that kind of capacity. So we are again advocating for that and testifying, uh, against the leg- with the legislature on that. But the legislature has not exempted private contractors doing municipal business. For us, that is any private contractor that we hire to do snow removal. The issue will be come January first of twenty twenty-six, when this is enacted, they will not be able to get their vehicles passed inspection. Inspections will fail if they do not meet this requirement. So we are meeting and we advocated again today that this is something that is going to be a significant issue because we will then either need to hire more employees to make sure that we have snow removal or they will have to address this, um, statewide for all the municipalities, which I would assume is every one of them that is using private contractors for snow removal. So I will keep you posted. Um, this line item will be affected if we have to adjust that in any way. Um, but we don't know that until we go through the year and figure out where we, where we fall with that, um, legislation. Um, municipal lighting and the gasoline and fuel line, we've kept, um, level. There's a slight decrease in the gasoline just because I wanted a round number, the two hundred and sixty-one dollars made no sense to me. Um, the cemetery line, as I just mentioned, we consolidated that up. So the public works and facilities has an increase of five point three seven percent, which is primarily the expenses, um, which is just the cost of doing business in the facilities world and public works world these days. Uh, the health department, um, fairly standard, the, um, office administrator, her salary at a step increase. The wages line, which covers our animal control officer and our nurse. And then the health department expenses, there's a slight increase in fiscal twenty-six to the Nishoba Associated Boards of Health Assessment, and that is reflected there. Uh, the veterans department is just a, um, cost of living increase on the veterans agent salary. Um, the library, so the library, the director wages, uh, Tina is under a contract, so that is her, actually it points to the personnel increase, so that is her increase. The wages line, so we went back and forth quite a bit, obviously we are in the process of building a brand new library. Um, when the library is open, we are restoring the historic entrance. So in order to actually have a productive library, we will need staff at both entrances, the ground floor and the second floor or the new historic floor. So this increase, we estimated about six months, maybe a little bit more, um, of the current staff. And then, um, the second half of fiscal twenty-six would have, um, one of the current librarians that's part-time go to full-time and then hire two library aides that would really staff the circulation desk and be able to have the resources, um, available. So that will add, um, and the one that's going from, excuse me, part-time to full-time is already benefit eligible. There's no cost to benefits, uh, and then the two aides that we're adding would be under the benefit eligible range. Uh, the expense line, uh, the director is recommending decreasing it, uh, a large part of that is materials. Um, she has funding from the last few years, has not spent the full materials line. Um, and again, we want to see, um, you know, obviously it should be a brand new building, brand new furniture, brand new everything. So other than that, she should need very little on the expense side. Um, this also includes moving the last of the utilities that were covered under the library budget into the facilities budget. Um, and so that is what she's expecting, um, that first year. Obviously it's something that we will look at going forward about the cost of maintaining. My guess is it will increase the facilities budget, um, but we won't know until the building is open. Uh, the recreation department, it's just their cost of living increases, um, in a step for the, um, office staff. Uh, from there we have Lake Boone Commission, um, is requesting level funding. Uh, the historical commission, um, so I did not actually hear from anyone in the historical commission. Uh, they have requested twelve hundred dollars, even though it's a minimal amount, they have not spent that the last few years. So I'm only recommending five hundred dollars so they have something. Um, but they have not used any budget the last couple of years, it's been twelve hundred at the end of the year, so. Uh, the Memorial Day expenses, uh, that covers the cost of the flags for Memorial Day at the cemetery, we are level funding that. Uh, the townwide expenses, so group insurance, we've talked about this a few times. Um, we have a fourteen point nine percent increase on our health insurance. Um, the fiscal twenty-five budget is a little over, um, because we were estimating rates last year. So it's not a true fourteen point nine percent increase, but I am increasing it to, um, a little bit higher than I was originally planning. Um, this is one of those line items that you never know how many people you're going to have, people might move there and I didn't want to be too conservative. Um, I'd rather have more that falls to free cash if we don't need it than not have enough in a line like insurance. Uh, insurance and bonds, that is our liability insurance and the bonds for the folks that are required to be bonded. Um, last year, sorry, this year fiscal twenty-five, uh, Maya increased all of our deductibles across the board. Uh, we were still at a five hundred dollar deductible, they eliminated five hundred dollar deductibles, so we are now at a thousand dollar deductible. And deductibles on, um, public official claims is five thousand dollars. So, um, we have, uh, one that we just paid for that the board discussed Tuesday night. Um, and then we have, um, a civil, um, civil rights lawsuit that is pending. We will have a five thousand dollar deductible on that as well, you are all aware of that, we can touch upon that later. Um, so that, that accounts for some deductibles and the regular cost of our liability insurance. So all told, the municipal side is going up five point four nine percent, um, which, whoops, that did not work. And I apologize, I'm getting stuffed up, so. Um, no, thank you. Uh, so that's about five hundred and twenty-three thousand dollar increase on the municipal side of, um, the budget. Uh, the school department, um, no surprises here. The nine percent increase on the Nishoba district includes the, um, debt assessment. Their overall budget op- for operating was under three percent for us. Uh, and then Minuteman is fairly straightforward, um, their regular, um, increase, which accounts for the number of students that we have at the school. So the education budget went up eight point three eight percent. Again, a large portion of that is the, uh, excluded debt that will be coming separate through your taxes. Uh, the debt service side, so the top part of the debt, the principal, the long-term, um, the one point three five seven that is excluded debt. Um, and that is the municipal side, again, we talked about the, uh, library. Um, the interest for that first payment has increased that. Um, the non-exempt, um, is any long-term borrowing, so that would include, um, things like Lower Village, we borrowed that permanently. Um, some work to Center School that we paid for is on there. Um, a lot of that runs another ten or so years, so I would expect that to stay fairly level um, until we roll the temporary bonds into the permanent bonds. Um, so the second category is our temporary, so those are our, um, notes. Um, that first long-term debt bond, that is the interest for the fire truck, things that we purchased, um, that have an interest payment and not a principal payment. The non-exempt, same thing, that's, so these all make up the temporary, the two point five million dollar library project cost, the, the fire truck. Um, I don't know if there was any other, oh, we borrowed for a, um, we borrowed for a D P W, there was a, there was a third item that we borrowed for that, I'm sorry, I can't think of at the moment. Um, but those, so that is all, um, temporary costs, which means we have not permanently financed them. So at your meeting on, maybe August, maybe, I'm sorry, maybe May? The, the second meeting in May will be to authorize the temporary borrowing for those projects. Um, and then we will look to borrow them permanently in October is what our current schedule is, when we see what we will actually need and when the market levels out. Oh, the seven hundred and fifty thousand for the water project for the water main replacement, that's in there as well. Um, the special articles, raise and appropriate, these are all the articles that we went through in the warrant. Uh, ninety percent of those are the consent calendar items. Um, you can see that there's not a lot of fluctuation. Um, I did decrease the legal services line slightly. Um, we are trending very well with our legal services. Um, and as of today, we still have all of fiscal twenty-five's appropriation in there. So I didn't want to go down too much because you never know when it comes to legal services, but, um, I cut that a little bit just to, um, replenish what's been used. Um, otherwise, uh, the, the increases that have a high percentage is because it's a small dollar amount, so a little bit of money makes a large percentage. Um, the, the largest one of true cost would be, um, the property valuation, which as I said, we're in a recertification year, so it has higher costs for the assessors, appraiser, because they are actually going out and doing the cyclical inspections. Otherwise, these articles are very straightforward and most of them are just repeats. Uh, we've already touched upon the appropriate and transfer, so these are all of our transfer articles. Um, and then we have the capital items at the bottom. Um, so when all is said and done with where we fall, if we, if we meet all of our revenue projections and our expenses stay, uh, we would expect about one point eight million, um, to roll into free cash next year. Um, there's a lot of what-ifs, uh, we talked about the, and I apologize, my computer is slowly dying now. Um, we talked about during the financial state of the town, uh, the governor does have the ability to implement nine C cuts if they start to incur, excuse me, um, federal cuts and they have to make up money. Uh, they have not alluded to that yet, but it is always a possibility. Um, so that number could fluctuate, uh, as we said, people could stop paying their taxes or have, you know, no ability to pay their taxes, that would impact that. So there's a lot of what-ifs. Um, I will say I was fairly close last year, um, we talked about at the finance committee that, um, when all goes well, it comes in pretty good, but, um, this year we just don't know. It, it will be a very interesting year to see where we fall with revenue and expenses. Now, anyone have any questions?
Hi.
Nice presentation.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Thank you. Honestly.
Thank you.
You make it a lot easier.
Yeah.
And extremely transparent, so.
Yeah, thank you. Um, would you like to recuse yourself for a moment?
Yes, I would.
Um.
Actually.
It's just a very minor.
I know.
Update, but I will, at least, I don't want to skip it altogether. Uh, so on the council of aging budget, um, the director's salary is the, um, standard cost of living. Uh, the wages line, so there are two things in there, so one is the majority of the staff, um, all receive a step increase. And this accounts for a couple of extra hours for the social worker. Um, when I met with the director to talk about her budget, she actually proposed, um, hiring a fifteen-hour-a-week social worker in addition to the social worker we currently have because the resources are so needed. Um, in the end, I could just not, I could not justify adding a position right now. Um, and so we agreed to increase the current social director up to nineteen and a half hours, I think from fifteen or sixteen, to give a little bit of flexibility. Um, but then next year we would make it a priority to look at adding a second social worker. Uh, the increase on the expense line is, um, she has a very engaged staff, uh, which has not always been the case. And they actually love going to conferences and trainings and this accounts for, um, the increase in travel and training costs, um, for the staff. So just minor increases, but I didn't want to just skip it altogether.
Yeah, that's great.
Mr. Chair. He's coming. So if there are any questions, um, I do not have this on your next, um, agenda, but I do have the warrant. So if you think of questions that are budget-related, obviously the budget is in the warrant and we could talk about them. Uh, you always can reach out to me directly as well. Um, I would say it is, you know, we've added a few things, mostly the cost of just running our buildings and our vehicles. Um, any, any new position. Um, any, any new positions I eliminated, uh, we had a position that we had funded. Fiscal twenty-five for a second part-time mechanic for the DPW. Uh, we have decided to not fill that for fiscal twenty-six, again, trying to not add more staff. Um, the, there is a vacant laborer position, so the director, we've discussed it, and he wanted to keep that open. Because that gives him more options come July first. If he decides he needs a laborer, if he decides he needs a mechanic, that'll give him some, some flexibility. Um, while not adding another whole position on. Um, there was a couple of requests from, um, other departments to add some part-time help, mostly administrative help. Um, I have eliminated all of those. Um, at this point, it's just, you know, we need to be cognizant of the tax base. Um, and so we will go another year and see if those resources are still needed, or if there's anything else we can do between the senior work-off program. Um, we have an intern now actually performing the duties of the second mechanic at the DPW. Uh, we do pay a, a small, um, wage, but, uh, we have, we're using Minuteman, um. Minuteman High School student, so, um, there are opportunities to do that again in the future. So, um, it is as lean as I think we could go and still offer the same level of service that we're offering today. And still trying to account for the rising costs that are unavoidable, unfortunately. Um, and then just for your knowledge, just to break down. So the. Municipal salaries, um, is fifty-two percent of the municipal budget. And expenses and insurance is forty-eight percent, we talk about this all the time, it's staff. Um, we don't have discretionary spending, um, we don't have, um, nice-to-haves. Um, everything that's in the budget is what is, what is required to run the operation, so. Okay, now I'm done. Unless there are questions, obviously.
No questions.
And I would encourage folks to read the budget book, um, the requests from every department is out there, folks can read it ahead of town meeting. They can be informed, um, can ask me questions, I have one more, um, of my monthly office hours before town meeting. So happy to address any concerns there, um, but I would encourage folks to read it if they have questions about our budget.
Is it the link to that again?
Uh, so for right now, it's only on this meeting page, uh, with, as the material. Uh, once I, I will start to move things over onto the, um, town meeting page.
You have a question?
No, I didn't have a question, I just wanted to say, I, I would second that about the reading, people reading the budget book. Because it really does show the thought processes behind every department head too, and I think that's so. That informs a lot of, you know, the, the staff that we have, like that, it, it really.
It's very enlightening.
It's very enlightening to know that, like, the people that work for the town are really taking. Into account them, and they take to heart what the taxpayers are paying. Um, you don't find that everywhere, and so I think it's, it's a really important, um, thing for people to look at. That's all.
Okay. Comments, questions?
Yeah.
All right, I will entertain.
Final motion.
Yes.
Mister Chair. Mister Chair, I move to adjourn.
Second. Most in favor?
Hi.
Hi. The record shows unanimous, thank you all very much for attending, both online as well as in person.
Do we have to sign the?